Ready to go? All right, with that, we would like to call our meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda for tonight? If not, we're going to take a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support. Comments, questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Okay, we have an agenda. A roll call. Are you completed?
Yes.
That is done. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. The girl will please rise and join us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next, we've retained a motion to approve the minutes of the June 25, 2024 regular meeting and the June 25, 2024 closed session meeting.
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion's support. Any comments, questions, additions, or deletions? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Thank you. We'll move down to hearings. We are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the agenda allows, to receive comment on the proposed downtown social district.
Move over to the public hearing.
Support. Yeah, we have motion support. Any comments, questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We have a hearing. Your lead, yes?
Sure. Curtis is going to put up the map for the district. We've worked with the DDA on creating this district map and the rules that were in your packet and available online. Tonight's public hearing is to take comments on the social district. And the next step, we'll go back and work with staff, being the law enforcement side of things and the PW side of things. To start us off, the rules for the district, the Elma Social District will be seven days a week, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Those 21 years or older can purchase beverages in designated cup from participating establishments and carry and consume in the district's common areas, which include the sidewalks and provided public spaces. And your sidewalks are in the blue on the map, and the public spaces are the small little blue squares showing some public spaces that picnic tables would be available for people to sit and enjoy the beverage. The social district beverage may not be taken outside of the common area of boundaries marked by Elma Social signs. Alcoholic beverages purchased at one establishment, and this is state law, cannot be taken into another. Elma Social cups are not reusable, so each time you buy one, it has to be a brand new cup. Outside, alcoholic beverages may not be brought into the common area. Again, state law, you can't just bring your own beverages in and drink them in the social district. Drink responsibly and have fun. Follow the policies of individual business owners regarding taking your drink into a store. Some merchants do not allow food or beverage consumption of any kind. State law also does not allow taking of alcoholic beverages purchased in one establishment into another. So if you take it from one place that you bought it, you can't walk back into a different establishment that can serve alcohol. That's a state law. Please help us by not attempting to do this. It also does not allow taking an alcoholic beverage into a restaurant that does not have a liquor license of its own. Lastly, and most importantly, please treat others and businesses within our community with respect and drink responsibly. All state of Michigan and city of Elma laws apply, including those prohibiting in public intoxication, impaired driving, and serving alcohol to minors. Again, this is the district that the DDA came up with. The other line is a red line. Those represent if the community is holding a public event downtown that is approved by this board, that beverages that are purchased at those licensed facilities, you may take your beverage in those locations during those event times. Other than that, you wouldn't be allowed to obviously be in the street with the consumption of your beverage you bought. Pretty straightforward. We talked to multiple downtowns that do this, and it's been a non-issue for them from an enforcement standpoint. People need reminders every once in a while with the form of part of rowdiness or those types of things. Those haven't come to fruition in the communities that we've talked to, and there's been, there's a lot of them. But this is, like anything else, if something, people weren't abusing it too much or not following the rules, this is something that the board could pull at any time, too, and say, you know what? It's not working for us, and we pull that. Again, we're just taking comments tonight, and from here, we'll be working with the public service side of things and the PW side of things to work out the details, and we'll be back to the board at some point with that. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Who on the board has the first question?
One of the questions that came up to me was why it extends so far, I guess, over towards Wright Avenue, those last couple blocks? And what was some of the thinking was?
Well, this is all B1, Central Business District, the downtown district. Two businesses come and go, things change, so we just put them where the, basically the central business corridor is at, including Center Street there. You never know when it's going to happen, not happen. But that's why, for the most part, those locations were chosen.
And I think the prior discussion, when we were talking about this at DDA or...
DDA, yeah.
That's where it was. Excuse me. It's better to start out bigger, you can shrink it easier than you can grow it.
Okay.
So it's going to be easier to shrink this down if we need to or want to, at least as a later point. Anybody else have a question or comment? Because I have, but I can't really tell by the blue lines there. Does that include the parking lots? Because I thought we talked about doing that.
Well, after talking with some of the police department, with the police department's staff, they felt that it'd be easier to make sure people aren't walking to and from parking lots with cups if those were not included.
Okay. So if we wanted to, if somebody, if we were having something during an event and we weren't closing off Superior and wanted to have an event in the parking lot, is it going to be allowed to do that?
They would not be able to carry that cup into that area, no. It would just be the areas that are marked up there. The only way you could do that is what we're going to be doing for Elma Live, where you have a special license for the chamber, and the chamber has set a boundary, and then...
But then you can't bring your cup in, then?
Exactly. Yep, exactly.
The establishment.
Yep, exactly.
It's going to be a separate sale.
Yep. And their thought was, you know, because this is seven days a week, 10 to 10, that it'd be easier to monitor if it wasn't allowable to walk back and forth from the parking lot with that. So that was the thought. That's why we're taking comments.
And that's fine. That was just my question, because I knew we talked about the parking lots. If we, somebody wanted, for whatever reason, put up a tent. Okay. Any more comments from the board, questions? Hearing none this time, so are there any members of the public that would like to comment or have a question about the social district? If so, please go to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Jeanette B., and I live right next door to the bar. I've been there for nine years now. Where Prime America is, there's four apartments above Prime America, and two of them are in the back and one in the back apartments. And a few years ago, when they were building the little area off of the back of the bar there for the people to be outside, I was fine with that. I was fine with them all about people having a good time and having fun. There's actually a schedule where Sunday is totally quiet, Monday and Tuesday is good, Wednesday is good, Thursday starts sort of happening up from Saturday, and Friday and Saturday are you too busy stays there, where you're going to get the noise and stuff like that. But what I've observed in the nine years I've been there is you got people that walk through the alley and they go from Pine Knot back and forth over to the bar there and break hearts. And I think if you allow people to walk around with cups of liquor like that, I think you're going to run into some problems, because there's going to be people, there's always people that kind of press the limit and see how far they can take it. But there's also a lot of college kids that when they get back to college, they're down there at the bar. And what's going to stop me from handing my underage friend one of these drinks, you know, and they look like they're old enough, they can't tell, who's going to be checking IDs to see who's old enough to be doing this? And I think right now, the way they've got, right now, they got the patio area, and then they got the seating out in front of the bar that is really nice. They've got the same thing down at the brewery. The pizza place could do the same thing. I think that's a great idea, because you could get more of a contained area with them there, right there. But I think if they're going to have the freedom to walk around, they're going to have people that are going to feel free enough to get in their cars and drive home or drive around to their friends and, you know. Quite often, I walk through the alley and I smell people smoking marijuana, which, again, I don't say anything to each his own, but I mean, that's already kind of gone its own way, and everybody's feeling pretty free of doing that anymore right out in the open. So I'm afraid that if you pass this situation where they could walk around freely drinking on the streets like that, I'm afraid that would take it to another level and it would be a problem after a while. And like I say, I don't have any problem with everybody drinking and doing their thing and having a good time. I'm all about that, you know. The way I look at it is, I've learned to put off the noise. The bar was there before I was, so, you know. Like I say, I don't have a problem with that, but I think this would be a problem. I think you'd be getting into a kind of a dangerous area with this, especially letting them walk around and drink like that. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to give us the commission to make this topic?
Ruth Inferior, I live on Piney Avenue. I just want to mention that, sorry, I've been huffing and puffing to get here. Some of these cities call these DORs designated outdoor refreshment areas. I don't know if social district, you know, you can think about something else, maybe. At least one of you in your online profile believes Elma is a family-focused city. I just wonder if this ordinance will improve this family-focused city. These are just thoughts to think about, okay? And a second profile states that you want to help make this city, it says "the city", I included Elma, the best that it can be. And we all want that, don't we? We do. We all want that. So I'm just saying, how does this ordinance help make Elma the best that it can be? Simple. How will this improve the lives of most or all of our citizens? Why 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which seems like a long time during the day? And I'm thinking 10:00 AM? I don't know. Maybe you have an explanation for some of this. And then seven days a week? Again, that seems like a little much for our little city. But seven days a week, and from Wright Avenue to Pine Avenue, the whole downtown district. Is that necessary? Don't know. Well, of course, I think not, but, you know, that's my opinion on that. Some cities are doing this on the first Friday of each month. Some are running a pilot program. Some have later hours. Some are Thursday and Friday only. I mean, what I was thinking about was, okay, is it really necessary to be walking by the church on Sunday on Superior Street with our alcohol in our hands? And, you know, I know, almost everybody has given up on Sundays. Given up on Sundays, and we do anything and everything on Sundays now. Fine. But I don't think this is really necessary, is it? On Sunday morning? Sunday afternoon? I don't know. I know you will decide. What will this teach the children and teens of our city about being social? You use the word "social district." What does it teach our youth about being social? Do you need alcohol to be social? And I thought, explain this to your child. This new ordinance, the social district ordinance, is being established so adults can walk the streets carrying alcohol in an approved 16-ounce cup, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, with all the restrictions. And then the child says, Daddy, why do they need to walk around? You know, they're not used to everybody walking around with a lot of things in their hands. That's only an inkling of the conversation I think some families could be having with children, youth, teens. Please consider the children and teens who walk downtown and their parents with the, not with their parents, the children who walk downtown and their parents with the additional worry that this ordinance might bring. We don't know that, but it could. And in my youth, I had an incident downtown with a person who you're not thinking of being in this social district. But some of us have had issues with a person outside of who you think is going to be in this social district. And personally, I would have issues right now letting my children walk downtown with this ordinance. And I'd like to hear why you don't, okay? And I know some of you no longer have youth in your families, but remember, this is a And I don't know. Please consider all of the residents who live, and I think that's probably been covered, including sleep and work in the downtown Elma district, because it is safe and peaceful. And we want it to continue to be safe and peaceful. And hopefully it will be if you implement this. I said to, I think you've already heard from this, since I know the person before me, so I said, consider those who have lived downtown for decades, and there are some that have been living downtown longer than the person before me. And do they need to now move? Just something to think about. And I said, remember, oh, think of the money being put into all of the above business rentals? And are they being built exclusively for those who desire a social district? Excuse me. I'm almost done. And I said, from the social district, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, and the whole length of our downtown. I just think those three things are excessive. Remember those who want to come to downtown Elma during the day or evening, but will no longer do so because of the social district. If it's implemented all the way downtown, why would some of those people come downtown during the day or evening? Because they don't want a confrontation with anyone. They don't expect a confrontation from anyone. Granted, 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 I understand that. But they may not come down to the strain productions, which would be a detriment to our family-focused city and the lovely art center that is right there next door. And we know they've been having programs for children as well as adults. Okay? And I just kind of want to mention that it is concerning to some people that I have talked to in the area. When there is a strong public opposition, which I know a lot of people did not know about this meeting tonight, but there is a strong public opposition toward a proposal when there is. I know, and we understand, that you have that final say. You have the first say, the middle say, the last say. You know, we understand that. So just consider some of my thoughts and think about what is best for our city, which I know you do. I know you do. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to give us a question?
Question?
Can I ask a question? In light of things that were mentioned, there are a lot of restrictions, state restrictions and things. So is there, my initial thought was that this was more like the outdoor seating, that people were able to bring things out, but the roaming between places. Is there anything that people would be doing besides, I mean, if you can't take it from one place to another, you know, that serves alcohol? What is the main purpose of the carrying of the cup?
Exactly. It's a...
To be outside?
To be outside.
Okay.
You can walk in those areas, as you say, sidewalks, and then there's seating areas where you can sit down and consume a beverage.
And do the different places have different, like you say, you know, they're not supposed to be taking one thing from one establishment to another? Do they have different cups so that if somebody came in?
It's, each individual licensed business has to have their own state of Michigan license for that. So their license is tied to that they want to be a part of it. So they're responsible to, you know, make sure that, one, that this person is 21 years old, that they're in that, that is designated for the district, so law enforcement can see.
The companies will need to be, the establishments will need to be paying attention that someone's coming in with a cup that they didn't get from that. But they are all the same, and there's nothing like a wristband that people have been checked for ID or anything. It's just...
Have you been to Traverse City?
I don't want my chair.
Traverse City, yeah. Rockford, no, I'm saying, Hastings, Rockford, Traverse City, Kalamazoo. I was just in Luddington this weekend, and it was to the point where you're not allowed to take it into other, like, places that serve alcohol. There were a lot of places that, like shopping, like clothing stores and things like that, where people could get a drink, take it in. I noticed, I was like, why is this guy walking around town? You know, it was on my mind, obviously, and then, yeah, I saw it, and you could see it with, there was a park downtown, and then there was a few shops where people were taking them in. There was also shops that had signs specifically on the door that says, "No outside food or drinks," and so we didn't see them in those scenarios, so. And it's up to them, and a lot of times, like I said, it's, you know, you can talk about different ways of doing this, you know? The time is, 10 o'clock seems like late for most people, but I know when the pub gets going, it's after 10:00. That's when, that's when really the noise starts. So, you know, if you said 9:00 was it, I mean, that's what you could do. You could talk about those things. But when you're out and about, and Luddington's a very family-oriented, I would agree, town. It just, it definitely is. And unless you're looking for it, most times you don't notice it. That's been the experience I've seen in talking with the communities that have this right now. Again, we're just taking comment.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking because I don't, I don't know a lot about it, and I don't, can you have alcohol before noon on Sundays? People can buy that now? Has that a lot changed? I mean, a million years ago, I thought that you couldn't...
Oh, there was, you couldn't buy it on Sunday.
Right, at all. So that's not a rule anymore?
Just like, you know, marijuana. I mean, it's completely legal now, and things have changed.
Yeah, I didn't, I was just clarifying because I didn't know.
No, and 25 years ago, when I came to town, they weren't, you know, you couldn't do the outdoor seating areas. There was, you know, same kind of thing. It's not going to work, it's going to cause issues, and it's been a very positive thing for the downtown. Not saying, this is why we're taking comment, not saying that this is everyone's cup of tea. That's, you try to find a happy medium, if that's what you want to do, so.
I have these communities that implemented it. Have they seen an increase in their downtown businesses and getting people to their downtowns? Because that is, I'm assuming our whole purpose of trying this is trying to get more people social downtown and visiting our businesses. Have these communities seen an uptick in businesses?
I don't know if they kept track of that side of it. I know talking with our counterparts in Hastings, which is more of our size community, and they're not really touristy either. I mean, we're kind of a center-state city. They would like to see more people use it. That's, you know, it's, like I said, it's super quiet, hasn't had any issues, but they would like to have more people using it, since they've gone to the trouble to put it together. So it's just one of those things where you keep, you add things, and if they work, that's great. If they don't, then you move on and try something else. I remember those, and I hate to go back to that, but those outdoor cafes was a big deal to get that done over the years, and not just here, but the state, at the state level.
And that seems like a nice addition, I think, the outdoor seating at an establishment.
And I get where everyone's coming, you know, they question it, because why do it? You know? But if it adds something that can be a positive to it, that is, then why not try to do it?
And ultimately, we do control it. We, you know, if we see a problem that can't be taken care of, I mean, you're bound to have issues. I'm sure we have issues right now. It was spoken about, some people are getting too rowdy at late at night, although I suspect most of that happened in Derek City after 10:00. But, you know, we do have a good police force, and I think they can, they are handling things. I don't think we have a big problem downtown today. I think it's calmer downtown with the activity and things going on now than it was when I was a kid. There is a lot more rowdiness downtown when I was younger, back in the late '60s, early '70s. There were some real problems out there.
But that's some things you can talk about, you know, if that seems...
Yeah, if we see behaviors that we don't like, and they're not appropriate, we can clamp down. You can shorten hours, you can remove the whole district.
Yeah. And I kind of piggyback what you're saying with law enforcement. I do like the fact that, you know, at first I looked at it, and I think my inclination was similar to yours, in terms of 10 to 10, I was like, that's kind of, I mean, I don't know what seems realistic. But I also do like the fact that there's a concrete beginning and a concrete start. There's a, it's not like you don't have an officer looking and saying, well, it's the second Thursday of the month, so they can't have it, so now I have to, versus, I like the fact that it's throughout the week. You know, initially, I was kind of against Sunday, but now, again, the goal would be not to make it more work for those law enforcement officers just because we happen to pick two days out of the week or three days out of the week or something similar to that, or maybe change the times. I like the fact that everything's consistent throughout the week. I think it makes it easier to monitor, kind of similar with your emphasis for the parking lots. I think it's easier, someone goes into the parking lot, it's not allowed. You know, I could see the point of making it for parking lots at the same time, but having at least a concrete set of, like, rules, all parking lots and no parking lots, all sidewalks within that district, every day of the week, a certain timeframe. I think those make sense. Make it easier to monitor.
From my own perspective, I think it's probably not going to be used as much as what some people might fear. I don't see it being all that popular. We're not a tourist town. We don't, of course, I go to bed early, but I don't think we get a lot of problems at night, you know? And if they are, they're after 10:00, I think, so. I just don't see it turning into a problem that we can't control.
Like I said, as you think about it, taking the comments that you've heard, you know, you can modify things and work with the staff to come up with something that feels appropriate if we move forward, so. Have we heard any feedback from the local bars about what their implications may be or what their thoughts are?
Are they even interested in participating?
Yeah, are they interested? So there's a couple here, so. Yeah, I have a couple here. So, yeah, a couple here.
We have done it for special events. Over COVID especially, we had some of those outdoor events and, you know, with limited success. They never, I don't think they were huge events when we did allow it for those special If you'd like to come to the podium and address the commission, please go ahead.
I didn't plan on talking, but I'm going to be up there anyway.
Could you give us your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Megan Menzel. I live at 614 East Carrier Street. And I also work at Black House in downtown Elma. But I just want to say thank you for the work that you've put in so far for this proposal. And I would like to acknowledge specifically the location, like, the areas that you can go on the street. And just that I appreciate that if this were added, it reminds me of just like when I was being raised, I was told that where there are boundaries, there's also freedom. And knowing that these areas would be more patrolled and knowing that the officers are, you know, looking out for the community and they are looking to make sure that it is a safe place for us. And also from the perspective, perspective of an employee at Black House, we personally have our bartenders tips trained and they are trained to look for people that maybe have purchased too much alcohol at one point. So when it comes to the concern of like having people maybe drinking too much, I think if anything, this might more so regulate the safety downtown and like the intake that people have because our bartenders can tell when people are reaching that point of maybe they shouldn't have another drink. So they know when not to sell somebody another one and when to cut someone off. And I think other businesses and bars downtown have the same thing. But I'll just speak for us. And kind of knowing where those limits are and when people are at their house, there's not really the same type of regulation or safety protocols and they're still figuring out a way home and everything. So just thinking of that perspective, just knowing that our staff is doing everything that they can to make sure it's a safe thing, but also we appreciate that this is a possibility to bring in maybe more activity in the downtown area in a positive light. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Susan Lee Ken. I was just thinking, if I'm, I'll take myself for an example, I don't drink, but I'm going to take myself for an example. I'm over there at a bar next door to me and I'm sitting outside having some drinks and so I want to take a drink now and I want to walk down the street with it. But I can't take it over to the Black House or I can't take it over to Pizza Line or to the one on the other bar. So I got to finish it before I get there, right? So what is the point of being able to walk around with this drink when you're going to have to finish it before you get to the next one because you can't go into this next place with a drink? You know what I'm saying? And I think right now it's kind of a beautiful thing the way they've got all these enclosed areas on the sidewalks and stuff for the people to sit in and enjoy it. And I think people really do enjoy that. And I think they really adds to the downtown and with the umbrellas out and everything. But if I can't openly take this drink with me and go wherever I want to with it because the next establishment isn't going to let me, or as you're saying, you know, your bartender sees that I'm having a little too much, so maybe I can get a friend of mine to go get me a cup and bring it out to me. I mean, I just, I'm sorry, I just think it's going to open up a can of worms myself, but this isn't my opinion. But I'm just wondering, what's the point of being able to walk around with it if you can't really walk around with it? You can't really go into the next area with this drink? You'd have to get a drink from them. That's my question anyhow.
And the thinking behind it, I believe, is to get a drink and go sit someplace that's not another establishment.
Yeah.
If you're going to run from alcohol establishment to alcohol establishment, that's a different mindset, a different event than what we're envisioning here, I believe. You know, if somebody's going to consume large amounts of alcohol, there's some time you can't stop that. Bartenders do what they can and I'm sure they do a good job as, you know, the best they can, you know? But you could say the same thing for a packaged liquor store. We've got, you know, a packaged liquor store selling somebody 12 beers, do they really, you know, like to go consume those? And we don't know the difference. You are depending upon people using good judgment and behaving themselves and that's why the rules are in place. And that's why I'm putting my confidence in the fact that people will behave for the most part and that we have a police force that will enforce and control and modify the behavior of those that might choose to do things that are not according to the rules.
So would it be like a program that you ran for a while to see how this can work before you made it official?
Well, we have to make it official, I believe, to make it work, but then we can always, at any time, we can pull it back and shut it down or modify it in any number of ways, I believe. We have options.
But you have to get it approved through the State of Michigan first and then each one of the individual businesses that want to be a part of it that have a liquor license have to get their liquor license to be able to sell as a social district.
I think you'd actually make more money as a business by having these sidewalks enclosed where you have, having people stay in there and drinking and hanging out with their friends.
Quite honestly, I think that's where most of this activity is going to continue to stay within the realm. Personally, I think it's going to be like marijuana. It's going to be, you know, we were limited to three licenses. We've got one shop and, you know, it's really, to me, it seems to be no more visible in the community than it was before it was legal. So perhaps you're seeing more of it in the alley behind the bars downtown.
Because we parked back in the alley and watched.
Yeah, so you probably do see a little bit more of it there than what I run into, but that's just, I don't, I'm not downtown really in freedom.
From a lot of the feedback I was getting, it was, you know, the fear is the bar hopping crowd, but I think 10:00 kind of limits that. What the, from the couple storefronts or businesses that I spoke to when I was out is they saw an uptick, and this is very anecdotal, they saw an uptick in people lingering longer to, and when they linger in these retail stores, they typically purchase more. So when they're hanging out at clothing stores or something like that because they know they have to drink that in that downtown districts, they're hanging out longer, they're actually spending more money. And again, some of the ones I talked to, they just didn't allow it in their shop.
And they might run into a place that doesn't have alcohol, grab a pizza, grab a sandwich, sit down on the benches out front and, as Manny said, linger. I mean, that's kind of the whole behind the, and to continue with the family-friendly atmosphere that we've worked very, very hard to foster. And we're certainly, no, I have no intention, I'm sure no one has any intention of letting that deteriorate.
Okay. That's all. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Megan? Megan?
Yes, please.
Okay. You want me over there?
I was thinking about the lingering in retail stores. I'm not sure what time of day we're talking about because our stores are not open at night. And we can't, for the most part, most of our stores are not open at night anyway, right? So maybe, you know, if they are, then I need to go downtown more often at night. But I know there are a few that are open. But I know also that people that work until 5:00 sometimes have a difficult time getting out of work and out of parking lots and downtown, trying to beat themselves to a store that will stay open long enough for them to get something before they go home. So, and I don't want to put any more on any of the business owners, you know, to try to stay open at night. Like if you did start smaller and try, you know, one night, like Friday night or Thursday night, like St. Louis used to do Thursday and some people here used to do Thursday or Friday. But anyway, if you started smaller and you see how much clientele you get from here and in the outlying areas, because I think people would come probably from outlying areas and that's what you're thinking, but I don't see them coming at 10:00 AM. I just don't. I don't understand that start time, but I haven't heard, and I couldn't hear everything. I apologize if you've said something. I couldn't hear everything and that's my fault. But anyway, this won't cause for more officers, right? It will just be the same officers, putting more work on them, perhaps? But they'll still have enough officers on each shift so that they can...
If it became a problem, I'm sure we would address it.
If it was something that...
If it really became a problem.
If it became that, then you wouldn't do it.
Right, pull it back.
You'd just have to get rid of it. If it caused where you needed that many officers, then...
I was here anyway. I just, you know, couldn't hear everything that was said over here. And all of us know that we now have marijuana encouraged in our community. And we have four stores, maybe?
We have one store.
One store. And three other manufacturing places or something?
Zero.
Yeah. Did it change?
There's only one.
None ever, none were ever here. They were, we were, they were offered licenses or there was ability to apply a license. We authorized them to be here.
So there's one out by Red Oak right now?
That's correct.
And that's the only one?
That's the only one.
Oh, I'm educated. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I don't know, I know it's an off-the-wall thing, but I thought about Dial-A-Ride and I thought, you know, these people aren't going to be able to... I know they're not the people you're thinking of. They're going to have their cars or they're going to walk. But I was thinking of Dial-A-Ride and I thought if there was anybody that took Dial-A-Ride down to downtown Elma to enjoy the social district, then how do they get home?
We have taxis in, the Dial-A-Ride goes until like 7:00, I believe.
You have taxis in what?
We have taxi services in Elma. There's two, there's two taxis that they could call or Uber drivers.
Okay. Because I was just thinking Dial-A-Ride isn't there.
There's other sorts to get rides.
But they could possibly be on one night a week or whatever. That's all. Thank you.
I do have a question. What is the reasoning for the 10:00 AM? Is it five o'clock? Sorry, you have to open it. Correct?
Well, Tim, you're going to have certain events that start at 10:00.
That's the reasoning? Okay. Case there's an event, got it.
And once you set your time for the State of Michigan, you're kind of locked into it until you go back and change.
Okay, makes sense. So they're really...
And if there's an issue, then...
Because we don't get ours open.
If there's an issue, then we can change it. If there's an issue at 10:00, then...
That's where I'm setting it.
But that's why, like I said, there's nothing in stone yet. This is...
This is the first act.
The first act.
Yeah.
And then was there any, forgive me if I missed it, was there any clarifications about those outdoor patios in terms of where that threshold is in terms of like person walking by the street? I know the Black House, for example, is actually split. Their kind of outdoor seating is... So is it like if I'm, do I, is there like imaginary line that I hit?
My, in my vision, if you're going to go ahead here and confirm wrong, my vision is the Black House and other establishments have their outdoor seating area, you just can't sit down. I mean, if you're walking past with a cup in your hand, you haven't really, but if you sit down at their tables with that cup that you got from a different establishment, then you've kind of entered their realm more or less.
I would make sure there's probably a revision there that clarifies like, I don't know, I just see that. Well, like, so if I'm standing in next to that table, talking to friends that are sitting down at that table, like, I mean, I just see that being, that could potentially be an issue.
Yeah. Maybe if people are being disruptive of some sort, there's a different behavior than if somebody's standing there talking, I don't know, is it's worth arresting somebody for that or ticketing them? I just...
You've never seen that before.
Basically, what the outdoor patios are an extension of their liquor license. So any outdoor seating area is technically part of their indoor license. The sidewalk is there, like you said it is. It's, that is still the public rights away. They serve there in that confined area and that's where they can sit with that license. If they buy an outdoor drink, if this, they go through this, then technically they need to be in the common or the public areas consuming it. Now, people are going to stop and talk, that's the whole, that's kind of some of the point of it. It's to be like, like I said, if it becomes an issue, then you can deal... I don't know, the Midlands close. Midlands have theirs almost since it started and they've expanded even more on it than when it started. They actually have set up just area, bigger areas than they had before for seating. But they are a bigger city and they do have more people visit than we do.
Events.
Yeah.
I mean, truly revolving around events, most of the sector.
So, but like I said, we're here to take comments tonight as we...
This is the idea is that hopefully more events are scheduled because we have the opportunity to have the social district.
Well, you have the events, then you don't have to go through the...
Right. To make it easier.
To make it easier.
To re-license things where the chamber of commerce has been set up a bar.
Just wanted to reiterate because that was a good point to make.
So it makes it easier getting it, knowing this is in place.
Yeah, so like Elmo life, you know, you can buy a drink and walk around, you had to set up a special area for that. You have to do special licensing every time and whatnot. That's really where probably you're going to see the activity.
Makes sense.
I really don't think you'll see a lot of activity on a week-to-week basis when nothing else is going on downtown.
That makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Yes, especially with the diversity.
Okay, anybody else? Last chance. We're taking a motion to close the public hearing.
I want to close. Support.
Motion to support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion's carried. Thank you. Hopefully you have enough information to go forward.
Go on next up and bring back more information for you folks.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the agenda, we'll go to resolutions and we're to consider a resolution to ratify the investments for the following city funds. It looks like there is five of them before us tonight for a total of $1,250,000 at various rates in CDs and SEDAR investments. Your pleasure thereof.
Global approval. Support.
Motion to support. Any comments or questions? Curtis is here. Time to grill. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion's carried. Thank you. Next up, we'll consider a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds for the DWRF project number 7703-01, which is an upgrade to the principal, up to the aggregate principal amount of $10,500,000. Your pleasure.
Global approval.
Support. Okay, motion to support. I'm sure you will provide some background for us. We've talked about this a lot.
Yes, we have. This is our Neighborhood Street Projects, the Water Tower and Pine Avenue are tied to this funding that we received through the State Revolving Loan Fund, partial grant, partial loan. On the loan, this is the loan portion that we're buying the bonds through, you know, the State of Michigan. And we had the bond notice issued in the paper on January 16th of '24. And this is the final step that we need to approve to sell those bonds.
And we do have bond counsel here. If anyone has any questions, the bond counsel. Do you have anything you'd like to add or share? You're a Wallace Way. Why don't you get on camera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission Administration. Thanks for having me here. Eric McLaughlin, Dickinson Reit, Pulp Finest, partner at that firm. The resolution before you, it sets out the structure for issuing these bonds and securing the repayment of it. It authorizes the issuance of bonds, as you described, up to $10.5 million. At the last, I, my understanding was is that the expected loan amount is going to be just below $8 million. I don't know if that's changed yet. It may change between now and about August 7th when the state approves of the project. But that's the current thinking now. The $10.5 million matches what was stated in the notice of intent that was published earlier this year. Aside from that, the resolution pledges the net revenues of the system after provision has been made for the administration, the operation and maintenance of the system to has been made for the administration, the operation and maintenance of the system to keep it in good repair and working order. It also pledges the distributable state aid, the state aid that the city is eligible to receive in the event that net revenues are not sufficient to pay the bond debt service. That's not expected, but it's a secondary pledge that the state asks for in lieu of getting a credit assessment, which could cost up to $20,000. So saves us a little bit of money, not expected to have to use it, but it's there. The resolution also authorizes the office officer, Mr. Mayor, city managers, finance director, and the city clerk to take the actions and sign the documents that are necessary to sell, issue, and deliver the bonds to the Michigan Finance Authority. So that's my summary of the bond resolution. If there are any other questions that have to take them.
Okay, anybody have questions? Don't believe we have any. So thank you very much, we appreciate you coming and sharing your knowledge with us. Go forth and get some bonds.
Thank you.
We'll fix our wires, it's still one more step. Okay. So all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Next up, for consideration of a resolution to approve fiscal year 2025 budget amendments as presented. Move to approve.
Motion support.
Motion support. Some background, any questions?
Curtis is going to give you some background on amendments and a little bit on some of the budget year amendments.
Thank you. So these budget amendments are for the current fiscal year that we just started July 1st. And what these are is, and this is kind of financing 101 kind of stuff, is anytime we have a purchase order that we sign in one fiscal year, but we do not actually pay the invoices until the next fiscal year, those, those, the money was really dedicated in the year in which the purchase order was created. So seems we've signed a purchase order, so for example, for our parking lot, the, one of the amendments is our parking lot, we've already signed a purchase order, we already have an agreement in fiscal year 2024, which we just ended. That money will now carry over to 2025 so that we don't need to do a new purchase order, we don't need to reallocate the budget to account for that, because it was already accounted for during our 2024 fiscal year budget. So that's what all of these budget amendments for. The first one is for building security upgrades, the second one is the parking lot, the third one is the cemetery columbarium, fourth one is various different projects related to the parks, fifth one is for Michigan Avenue, Pine Avenue, and some sign replacements. The local street one is for the North of Washington project, and some crack seals and chip seals. The street improvement is engineering for upcoming street millage projects. The library is the shelving project and the digitization of the newspapers. Transits is the new dispatch software. Wastewater is several different projects, mostly the chlorine conversion, the IPP program, and the sewer portion of the North of Washington project, and some security upgrades. And then the water one is all have to do with engineering and professional services for the SRF project. So that money, even though we're going to spend it in the 2025 fiscal year, has already been basically earmarked during the 2024 budget. So just to, just to point out, so that if we're looking at the budget for the fiscal year 2024, just to kind of make a note, for like the general fund, right now, and these are still draft numbers, because we still got all of our year-end closings, but like, right now, if you look at it, it would show that we have, we essentially have $754,000 more in revenue than we did in expenses, which means that theoretically, just looking at that, you would think that we banked $754,000 last year. But really, you have to look at that number net of any of these purchase orders that we rolled over, because those numbers were earmarked against this budget. So in reality, once you take in all those purchase orders that we're about to approve, it's really closer to $80,000 is what we, essentially, what we saved this year in the budget, what we earned more than what we've spent, even though we technically didn't spend that money yet. So that's what these, these are for, and it's just a financing term, and gets us cleaned up and gets our books all better.
Thanks, Chris.
Any questions for Curtis? I don't know yet. No, I'm not hearing questions, but I do thank you. These are some issues that we've had in the past that we're not taking care of in previous years, until we got to a lot of time when they were minor problems, but still, it's nice to see that they're being taken care of in advance as they should be. So again, congratulations and thank you, Curtis. Okay, so we have motion on the table. Are there any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, number four, consideration of a resolution to approve request from Elma Brewing Company, which is to extend their outdoor patio and for seating and a roaster utilizing the sidewalk in front of the property at 202- or 3204 East Superior for their 10th anniversary party on July 19th and 20th. Your pleasure.
Move to approval. Support.
Motion support.
Letter, they have permission from the owner at 202-204 to extend that and proceeding and the roaster to, to celebrate the 10th.
So it's just coming down the sidewalk further?
Yes. The next two storefronts over to the west.
Okay, nice.
For those two days only.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, thank you. Next to ordinances, first up is consideration of a resolution to adopt ordinance number 844, which is an ordinance to amend Elma sign ordinance number 60-244. This will regulate the subsequent establishment and/or erection of billboards in the geographic boundaries of the city of Elma. Your pleasure thereof.
Move to that.
Motion support.
This is the very last portion of taking this out of the sign ordinance, this will amend it, so billboards are not a permitted use. The three that are here in town will be allowed to continue and maintain, but this will, we won't be able, they will not be able to at request on a billboard within the city limits, so. And that's something that both this commission and the planning commission discussed, and that, the current ones that we do have is enough of, you know, that size of sign in the, in the community, so.
Could I just ask a question? I just wondered if you've seen the sign at Domino's?
That's next on our agenda.
Pardon?
It's next on our agenda.
Yeah, we, I believe we've all seen it.
I just wondered if you'd driven by and seen the new sign at Domino's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, thank you. Moving on to number two, consideration of a resolution to adopt ordinance number 845, which is an ordinance to amend the fireworks ordinance codified at chapter 24 to regulate the use of fireworks within the geographic boundaries of the city of Elma. Your pleasure.
Move to... Go ahead. Move to adopt.
Motion support.
This amendment specifically deals with fireworks stands, giving their time, duration, that they can be there. Also, being a staff review, administrative staff review as opposed to being a special use permit coming through the planning commission. So they come in, pay their fee, fill out their application, give us the paperwork, they can put up their stand like you just saw the last few, few days, for that duration of time that's in the ordinance, so.
Basically, just makes it easier for our staff, as well as the vendors, to come in and do their thing. We've been doing it for a number of years with no problems, so. Comments or questions from anyone else? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Reports of officers, boards, and committees, the commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. Before us tonight, we have the zoning board of appeals, June 19, 2024, draft meeting minutes. The perks committee, June 24, 2024, draft meeting minutes. The planning commission, July 1, 2024, draft meeting minutes. The Elma Police Department, June 2024 report. The June 24 finance report, and the city managers' report. Your pleasure on receiving reports tonight.
Move to receive 1 through 5. Support.
Okay, we have motions on 1 through 5. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, we've received five reports.
Move to receive 6. Support.
We have a motion support, comments or questions? Eric, can you talk a bit?
Yes, just want to give you an update. We had our first advisory meeting with the Michigan North-South Rail, Railline. The main focus of that discussion was the phase two of the planning process, talked about the goals, objectives, what they expect out of the research and the deliveries that's in the ordinance there. They're looking for improvement schedules and cost estimates, market analysis, ridership demand, economic and financial analysis, management and governance structure, once the, the system is up and running, how will that be overseen? And then the big one, the implementation plan, how will this all come together? They figure this portion of the, of the planning process will be an 18 to 24-month process, and it won't just be the advisory community involved, they will be reaching out to the communities directly to have some kind of public hearing or some kind of public get-together to discuss the project. Wastewater water projects, just wanted to give you an update, and those at home. The wastewater treatment plant, sodium hypochlorite conversion is well underway. We do have our tank on site, which will be, we're holding a tank for the chlorine as opposed to the current gas. We have tested the system, you know, from a smaller system to go see if the chlorine is working properly, and it is. And we're in our last canister of the actual chlorine gas, so that is, we're right there in the final touches to have this finally done, and it's much safer facility.
Been many years in the making, so that's, that's a big one.
We'll be reading better with that done. And as mentioned early, the, when Curtis gave his little, he gave his spiel, the industrial pretreatment program, that attorney review of the new ordinance has been completed, and we're in the final stages of that being sent over to Eagle to review. The last commission meeting, you approved the analysis studies to be done to look at what's coming into the system. That will be all taken into account and sent to Eagle as well. So we're coming, getting closer to the end of that as well. The, June 26, we received bids for the drinking water SRF, and repainting of the elevated storage tower for the water. July 10, we're receiving bids for the Neighborhood Street Projects and lead water service line replacements. And then later on, Pine Avenue, that will be toward the end of the July for that bid opening, that's being done through MDOT. Don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but so far, so good with the bids that we've received so far. So once those get reviewed, make sure they're correct, those, the first line of bids will be coming to you most likely the next meeting, so. Draft water fee resolution, we figure we get this in front of you sooner than later. The meter replacements are part of the, the SRF project, as well as the identified galvanized lines from the water mains into the homes that need to be replaced are part of this project. They're all, both of those are on private property. Hopefully, and we think most people are going to allow us in to get the meters changed out. Every meter in every house, every business, every industrial facility is, we're putting new meters in. And then those folks that have a galvanized line has to be replaced. But if someone says no, you're not coming in the house, or going to replace this, what we have in front of you is a draft resolution to add an extra layer of, we really need to get this done, and please let us in to get this done. If not, this resolution, if it was approved in the future, it's for your review, it would add $100 a month fee onto their utility bill, and that would be there until they, they get the meter changed out, if that was the, if that was what was being, needed to be done, or the galvanized line needed to be replaced. So we're hoping, from the galvanized service line sort of side of things, that if people are being, not, it's not cooperative, that we could move on to someone else, but that's not the indication we're getting from the state of Michigan right now. The ones that we identified, we have to, we have to change. So that's why we brought that to you to review, and at some point in the future, we'll be looking to adopt that resolution. Hopefully, you don't have to use it, but...
We haven't had any problems so far, have we? What's your thought?
It's, there's some that are, that drag their feet right to the bitter end. And in the case of the inspections on the front end to get in the homes and take a look at what they have on the inside, because we have to verify if it's galvanized or it's, we haven't, there's no, we haven't found the lead stuff that everyone talks about to We were able to move on to other houses to get our inventory done in that first phase, It's nothing out of pocket for anybody to get these things done. If, you know, we tried to explain, we sent out letters a couple different times now with folks that we identified. We were a little more, hopefully, I did get a couple phone calls after the second letter went out, explaining to them that if you go to sell your house, it'd be nice if you had a new water line coming into the home that you can use as part of your sales pitch for your home. Plus, you'd be able to show the new owner that it is a safe water line coming in there so you're getting safe water to the home. So we're, we were hoping that that would kind of encourage folks to, and I hope it does. I really do hope it does. And then just for your information, I did include some of the Senate bills that are being reviewed, and most likely will happen on the, on the voting side of things, election coming up, and we'll go through those. So that's all I wanted to mention to the commission this evening.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Eric? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of receiving his report, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, we've received the report. Before we move to unfinished business, which is asking to go into closed session and come back out and ratify an agreement or two, should we go ahead and do public comments? In case there's any members of the public who'd like to comment, and don't want to necessarily wait for deliberations and closed session.
Yeah, sounds good.
Is that a motion?
Sure. That is.
Okay, we got a motion to support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. So move on down to comments. Do we do, do we want to do public comments or commissioner comments first? Let's do commissioners.
Just tonight, the evening in the park is happening right now. Right after the Crashy County players, hope that's going well. Other than that, all, no.
Okay. Michelle?
Congratulations to Elma Athletics, they, and the band. They, they did the ribbon cutting for the new turf today, football field. Next Thursday is rural urban day, it's a company picnic, and we invite everybody to come out there, it starts at 4:30 to 7:00. Steak dinner, it's our 48th year.
It's at the fairgrounds, right?
It's at the fairgrounds.
Okay. Thank you. Press in.
If you have a five-year-old who's not registered for kindergarten this fall, or August, we're starting in August, not fall, so come on in and get him registered, or go online. I don't have anything else, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dana?
Thanks for all the comments tonight, and obviously we'll take those into consideration. Thank you for all the work you do with Better.
Sarah?
No comments, thank you.
You guys may also. I'll just add my thanks to the members of the public and share their thoughts tonight, that's very much appreciated. Now we can open the floor to other comments on any topic. If anybody'd like to address the commission on any other topic, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. You'll have up to five minutes to do so.
My number one? Yeah, it's me.
If you want to.
I do. I do, that's what I'm here for tonight. Thank you for pushing this ad and letting me do this, so I didn't anticipate this being out for kids quite this long, but it's working. Is it okay if I come and pass something out to?
As long as it's not anything dangerous.
No. No, not at all.
Don't paper cut yourself.
This will just help add some references to what I'm here for. Before-after pictures. Before-after picture. You, like you've seen it a few times, a couple hundred times.
And when you get back, you can state your name and address.
Sure.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah. This is the print that I sent to the city before starting the project, for reference. So the engineers will proceed to see this. So before I start, I know I have five minutes, but I did note, I read this a few times. Oh, so sorry. It's the first time I've ever done this. Jason Sumrex, I live at nine thirty-three Charles Avenue in Elmo. For the record, I'm the last house in the city before the rail trail on Charles. Just real quick, before my five minutes starts, if I could ask, I read this several times, and it's probably more like seven or eight minutes, I can just come back, I probably would like to come back a few times with all the stuff I have to say, but probably maybe the next three or four meetings. I don't know how long, five minutes, I can do the best and stop and start over two weeks from now.
That seems a bit excessive, I don't know the process, I honestly, I haven't recovered that, I don't know the process, if there's, if any commissioners have a willingness to allow this, could we go a little bit further? Do we need a motion for that?
I, we never had.
I think so, yeah. I think we'll just allow it to go.
Yeah.
We're gonna want to make you come back five times.
Well, I'm gonna have to come back at least one or two more times, because I know that this is just the, like, beginning of the whole thing, there's so much work happening over the year.
Bringing me an iceberg.
I will do the best I can to go fast.
All right.
I read it so fast earlier, you wouldn't even be able to understand me speaking. It was, she couldn't understand me, she listens to me speak all the time. Okay, so I'll start. This is what I'm here for. These are tickets I've received for this fence. There's, there's more, there's a couple copies here, there's not as many, but there's, I received, I think, five or six tickets at this point for my ordinance violation of the fence. What you have in your hand is a before and after picture, a before and after picture of my fence that I put out. What you also have is the Greenside Up copy that was given to the city, to both engineers, city engineers, prior to me starting my project, which doesn't know what the fence on there, if you look at that, and it describes the fence as being full of a fence, it was being erected for a project. Sorry, I'm very nervous, I'll do the best I can. Good evening, how's it doing? My name's Jason Sumrex, here to talk about an ongoing issue my family's had. I'm here with my wife, Bonnie Sumrex, tonight. There's not enough time, like I said, for me to go through everything, but I'll try to cut through the chase here fast. I've been to court for this issue already. We've adjourned court to August thirtieth. Just for the record, the court is just me fighting the tickets. I lost two, it's not a, anything at this point, I'll let that become later, but this is just typically just a court date to fight the tickets in district court. I've reached out to a couple commissioners in the past about this issue I've had with the fence, being cited for having too tall of a fence. So some of you may be aware of some of the facts. I talked to Eric about maybe being part of the agenda, which I have no idea how to do that, or if I'm supposed to be able to do that. Eric advised me this is the only way I could come and speak to the commission. So here I am. I received a letter from the city attorney, Adam Florrie, on May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, advising me that I'm not allowed to contact the city anymore or potentially face felony charges for harassing public officials. I will get into that details much more later. Tonight, we don't have time for all that, but next commission meeting, I'd like to discuss that as a whole, about what I supposedly did that was so scary. The letter did tell me that I could attend public hearings, so again, here I am. First, what I'd like to talk about is the fact that I live in the house of my daughter, Brittany is fifteen, my son is thirteen, three bone retrievers, typical family person. A lot of you know me, or know who I am at least. For those who don't, I'd like to tell you a few more things that can, maybe some contextual information to let you know who I am. For me, I want you to really understand what I'm about versus maybe things that you've heard or thought you knew about me, and so I'd like to maybe make your own judgments tonight. Just, I came over here in nineteen eighty-seven, became a police officer for the city of Elmo. I served here for thirteen years and three months as a citizen city cop. I left in two thousand and eleven, I'll talk about that more in a minute. While here, I served as a field training officer, which was given to me by the admin union president, placed on the interview panel, prior to new police officers. I was also voted by my peers as the special response team team leader, which I'm very proud of all the positions I held. You don't get those unless you show leadership and show strength as a police officer. Strength in your, not your muscles, but your mind. I did receive a lot of accommodation here for chasing burglar suspects through a dark factory in Republic, captured all three of them late at night. But I did have some bad times, too. So when I add context, I'll tell you the truth of everything, there was not always good times. I did get a suspension one time for telling a gentleman a cush job. It's all in video, that was to the extent what I said. But I did get in trouble if I shouldn't have said it, and I did, so I got in trouble. The biggest negative was the then director of public safety, Dave Walsh. Some of you might be familiar with him, but I arrested his son in two thousand and seven for being highly intoxicated, driving northbound, right avenue, no lights on his car, heading in my plaza, open intoxication car, he was double the legal limit, he was old enough, had underage intoxicated people in his car. And from that point on, my career went very downhill, like Barry. I was ostracized by the chief of police, I was moved to day shift, I was bullied, I was singled out over and over again, told I was doing everything wrong. I was sent to Grand Rapids for a fit of duty, psychological examination, trying to get rid of me. Little bit older psychologist said I was fine. Doctor. I was placed on administrative leave here, paid administrative leave. The city attorney and I met. We viewed my personnel file, determined there was nothing they could do, didn't know how to, can't put me on paid leave, can't fire me. Chief, I've said for four years I've done so much wrong, from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven. After being bullied and told by the then Saint Andrew Fillmore that I was a bully, I was the one being bullied. I consulted an attorney, so that might be fired. The attorney handled many, many cases for law enforcement officers across the state in Saginaw, told me it's an easy one point five million dollars if I want to see the city. I said, talk about my wife and kids, as you can tell, it's the very emotional stuff for us. I chose not to lawsuit, I chose to go the other route, I was told it'd take years to settle lawsuits, it's not my style. I ended up negotiating with the city, or someone you're aware of, took a bio mutual agreement to separate for the city of Elmo, and left. Well, Dave Walsh's true colors came out, okay, years later, gets forced out of here, city of Elmo, and I probably took my parents' advice, stood tall, refused to fight, and battled with the city of Elmo, and at that time, took a bio with a mutual leave. I'm almost, I'm getting close. My public personnel file is on record, I would invite all of you to look at it and to look at the great evaluations I had, and all the wonderful things that I, awards I won. You look at it for yourself and make your judgment, that versus what you may have heard about me, two totally different things. I want to now talk about, I left law enforcement two thousand and eleven, took the bio, went into Century Twenty-One, I did real estate before that, I've been in real estate now for twenty-three years. Very scary time for my wife and I, with no consistent paycheck, but I quickly took off from real estate. My wife's been a nursery room nurse for twenty years in this community, I served the community as a law enforcement officer for thirteen and three months. My career took off and I've taught in sales for a long, long time, in fact, people on this panel have used me for real estate, not to use me, or family members, they know of me. They hired me because, well, we know why, they trust me, my work ethic, the fact that I'm a responsible person to assist them with real estate needs, which real estate's a huge deal, you handle a lot of money, people's real estate needs. I purchased Century Twenty-One in two thousand and seventeen, I bought the building, bought the business. I currently the principal owner of Century Twenty-One. I bought in Adam Buber, you might know him, he's from local Elmo, he's now my business partner, he consistently serves this community on a regular basis, over and over and over again. I do, too, nowhere near like Adam does, but I do. What I do is in the background, we have given money to this community, and I didn't pull the exact numbers from my CPA, but I did some math, some easy math, for seven years of ownership, I can tell you between thirty and fifty thousand dollars I've committed to this community, out of my own pocket, out of my wife's pocket. Given to YFC, Rural Development, talked about the Strand Theater, we're a sponsor of Strand Theater this year. We did the Polar Crunch for the Special Olympics, we've done the Quanis Club, giving money to YFC, Rural, Everday Strand Theater, United Way, Go On and On and On Salvation Army. I can't even tell you the number of money, the lengths we give to people. For the turf field that we talked about, we do, we've done it all. Okay? I will say that I'm not a saint, I'm not standing here saying you should treat me differently because I gave money, I don't, actually, we don't put that on social media, nobody even knows that until right now, it's the first time we're announced that I've given that kind of money. It's not something I brag about, it's something I do when I'm on the side. But I am a good person, a reasonable person, with a really good heart. I've given money to Little League and on and on. I coached in this community for years upon years upon years, made difference in kids' lives, or and over and over again. I have no family here. I stayed here because I love this community. I'm not from here, I have no affiliation with Elmo at all, don't need to be here. I chose to raise a family here because I love this community. By no means, they want you to treat me different because of anything I just said. By no means am I saying I'm some great person because of what I just did or said. I believe in law, I firmly believe in city ordinances. I believe they're there for a reason. We have to have these things there for, for the community good. That's who I believe in, what I believe in. All I'm asking for is we treat it fair and reasonably and like others. I know life's not perfectly fair, I tell my kids that all the time. And as a final note, thank you for extra time. I want to leave you with a couple of things before the next meeting, I have to come back, I have pages about pages about pages of things to talk about. I want to make important, probably the most important note. My wife and I and Keith Cole, Greenside Up, who's done community work for the city, Keith Cole, well-known contractor on here for Greenside Up. I hired him to do this job, paid forty-seven thousand dollars to put my driveway in, my fence up, and all of the things that you see there in that picture. I have a beautiful home, white keep, the lawn, if you go by the house, you see it, it's There's been a complete narrative that I did this intentionally and knowingly by the city ordinance. I'll, I'll show you proof in this in the next meeting, it's over and over and over again, this has been the narrative. That letter I talked about from the city attorney, with what the attorney said, Mark Williams has said it to my face, my car said, Mark, Perry Ripley said it to me. It might have been different, Jason, if you would just let us know. You have the proof right there, that was sent to you, I have an email proving that was sent to you, I have an email responding that you had that, you gave me the permit for that driveway. There is no permit for the fence, but that says right on it, twelve-foot fence. I gave that to the city, we have proof that we sent that to the city before doing this project. So let me finish with this. That narrative's blown out of the water at this point, Eric. We did a zoning board of appeals, which I was not allowed to attend because I was told we couldn't change that date, it was an emergent matter, we need to do this quickly. My wife attended, so I wasn't able to get up there and say a lot of these things. I tried to give her some information, my attorney did come, I hired an attorney because he just went over the legal stuff, he didn't go over all the background information, he didn't go over all the details of when we sent the stuff, apparently, he didn't do an awesome job, apparently, I didn't hire the best guy. We couldn't change the date because these volunteers had an email showing it. I had to coach JV basketball for this community on that day, didn't want to miss my game for my girls. We couldn't make a different date for me, not possible. In fact, we contacted the city a few times, I had a conversation with Mr. Ripley, and I'm gonna quote him. I asked Eric, Keith and I are gonna be out at the house, looking at the property line, looking at the project and going through it, Eric, would you, would you like to come to my house and meet with us? I'm gonna quote what Eric said. I do not need to, I trust you guys. Now the city wants me to pay fines, wants me to have to go through court, years of court battles, this will be, I will not give up. And I'll tell you why in the next meeting. Because this was over, and Eric and I agreed it was over. You guys restarted it, not you, but the city restarted this whole thing. It was over, I caught it myself, took it down, it restarted, not me, but the city of Elmo, they chose to keep this going. I asked Eric, man to man, how many times have you seen someone find you this often? First of yours, foundation. I'm gonna quote you again, Eric. All my years here, just one other time, Jason. That's not me treated fairly, that's not me treated equally. Now I ask this question, is the city gonna hold accountable the two engineers that got that print and allowed us to move forward with our project, or will it be accountable? I can hold accountable Mr. Ripley, who would take the time to come up to my house when I'd like him to, to look at this project, hold it accountable. You know, all the words, the words of Michael Carr in court were very interesting. Court got delayed because we were in there so long, there's so much more to the story. Mike McCarr, I talked about that, that permit, that, that print, and Mike McCarr said, can I see a copy of that? Absolutely. Hand him the copy, my wife heard it, it was right there, these words were this, pardon my language, I apologize in advance. Oh, fuck, it's right there, when you saw the twelve-foot fence on that print. Those are very telling words. They took an immediate break out of the, of the court to talk, I can only imagine what that conversation was about. On the last card. I feel terrible for Keith. He sat in court the entire six hours or four hours, whatever I think we were, just so disgruntled, he doesn't want to be part of this, but he does also knows the right thing to do at the same time and say, I gave the copy to the city, and now here we are. He feels terrible, I feel terrible, my wife feels terrible, my kids feel terrible. I have tons of facts and information that I will be sharing with you next time, so I don't want to take up a ton of time, I am so thankful that you're giving me extra time. True, my goal is to reach a fair, is to reach a fair solution with all involved, and hopefully shed some light on the need for adjustments in city procedures. Maybe even give Eric some help. I know Eric pretty well, I've hung out with Eric outside the city, the city tie. He has way too many responsibilities, way too many. There should be somebody in charge of zoning, he has so much to do. I see him work hard. I think that's led to a lot of this problem, a lot of the engineers apparently missing the print that was given to them. Thank you for your time, I'd be happy to tell you a heck of a lot more, because there's, that is maybe a third of what I want to share. All the facts and details of what's happened since then, I've got so much more of the miscommunication, maybe in angry and saying some mean things, but not being too nasty, but nice. This has been a very tough situation that was literally over, and you and I said it, thank goodness it's over, let's move forward. And guess what, we're still here. And I'll tell you why next time, I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna shock you, all the city time's been wasted on this fence.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other quarters of the public that would like to address the commission on any other topics? If so, please go to the podium. Not seeing anybody back on live, okay, so we're back in session, I guess I better open up my agenda.
Do you have any specific agenda?
That might be quicker. Please, thank you. Okay, so we have been adjourned from our closed session, so now we can, like to consider a resolution to ratify the collective bargaining tentative agreements with the Police Officers Association of Michigan for the Elmo Patrol Officers for the contract period effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Your pleasure.
Moved to ratifying.
We have motion support, did you want to give any background for the camera or just from your livers?
No, it's, we've, very briefly, we've been working with the unions on this for a while. The main takeaway from, from management side of things is law enforcement is a tough field out there right now for recruitment and retention. What is in our, both the agreements is to keep us consistent with our neighbor. We have very good training here and some very good officers, and, and we're hopeful that what is here will, will keep those, those in place. And, and then we'll also, as we look at this, there is gonna be some, there will be a need as we talk about sustainability of our budget, to look at, at our department and how the best, how the best to organize it going forward to make sure that we, we keep a department that the, the community has come to expect. So that's it.
Okay, anybody else have comments or questions at this point? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? And I don't think I need to abstain, but I, just for formality, you know, the record, yeah, would like to state that my son is a police officer employed by the city of Elmo, so I'm in favor of this as well. Okay, so next up, we need to consider a resolution to ratify the collective bargaining agreement, tentative agreements with the Command Officers Association of Michigan for Elmo Command Officers for the contract period effective July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Your pleasure.
Moved to that. Support.
Okay, motion support, anything more to add?
No, it's, the same thing, and, and the only difference with, with the pay structures with, between the patrol and the command, we have two sergeants underneath this union, and whatever the patrol is, they're, they're eleven percent more, so everything's the same except for that.
Okay, just keeps us competitive.
Keeps us competitive.
In the market.